Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, August 19th, 2021. And we're here for a work session. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Catherine, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Catherine. I have a couple announcements today as a reminder to all that the final live on 25 event for the summer will take place this evening from 5:00 to 9:30. I encourage everyone to come out and participate in these great festivities. I know I'm looking forward to it, and I hope that you will all join me. We're hoping the weather cooperates. It looks like there's not going to rain. And so the event is on, and I'm sure we'll see each other there. Great event. The last two events have broken records, and we look forward to it. I'm equally as excited for the Riverhead's opening day, the racetrack, not street, event at Epcot. Will take place this Saturday. We'll start, starting this Saturday, August 21st, 2021. The ribbon cutting will take place at 10:15 a.m. and will be followed by a fun-filled day of racing. There are vendors, and there are food trucks and tents, and there'll be plenty of family fun for the entire family. And the community is excited about this, and I'll be there, and I hope I can see you. And this is a topic that I have brought up at least three or four times. And whether we like it or not, fall is right around the corner, which means it's almost loosely pick-up season. The majority of residents rely on this service to help with their fall cleanups. So now is the time to reevaluate and consider all our options as a board. Our highway superintendent could not be here today, but we have asked him or his deputy to please join us at next week's work session to review this topic with us so we can arrive at a solution that works for everyone, and most importantly, the taxpayers, especially under these trying times under COVID and the increased rate that we are experiencing. Next, as many of you are aware, Tropical Storm Fred is approaching the Northeast. Rainy wind conditions are expected throughout the weekend. We are monitoring the storm development. Storm alerts and safety efforts will be listed on the town's website. All right, moving on to our first discussion item. We are here to discuss SEACRA for 205 Osborne Avenue. For this, we have one of our planners, Greg Berman, to discuss. Greg, good morning, and can you please go forward?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
So we have a follow-up discussion. As you recall, back in July, the Town Board had discussed a site plan application to develop a piece of property with a 50-foot-tall mixed-use building, which include ground floor offices and amenity space, as well as 39 residential apartments on the upper units on two parcels which are located on the northwest corner of Osborne Avenue and Court Street in Riverhead. This application came in under the newly adopted Railroad Avenue Overlake District, which was adopted by unanimous vote by the Town Board on January 5th, 2021. So back in July, we initiated coordinated SEACRA review as it is considered a Type 1 action under SEACRA. We sent out the necessary referrals to all the involved agencies, including the Water District, Sewer District, Highway Department, zoning board of appeals, Suffolk County Planning Commission, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And although the following agencies are not considered involved as they do not issue direct permits on the projects, the project was also referred to the Riverhead Fire District Board of Fire Commissioners, as well as the New York State DOT due to the project's location proximity to State Route 25. We received all comments from necessary agencies. There is a 30-day window during which that SEACRA coordination with the involved agencies can either object to a lead agency or provide comments. To date, we did receive comments from the Planning Commission. Project was also reviewed by the ARB. So I did prepare a draft resolution for the Town Board now that the 30-day SEACRA coordination period has ended. We do have a draft negative declaration. So just a quick little background on the adoption of the overlay district. There was a SEACRA analysis that was done before the Town Board adopted the Railroad Avenue Overlay District. That SEACRA analysis, when the Board adopted that, stated that properties which are contemplated under the Railroad Avenue Overlay District and are consistent with the base thresholds utilized for the adoption shall benefit from the adopted negative declaration. The one component of this project that does not comply, and they are seeking what's known as a community benefit under that overlay district, is that they are looking to opt into the Riverhead Parking District. The community benefit agreement through that, I'm sorry, the community benefit under that adopted overlay code says that projects that opt into the parking district are not required to provide parking for non-residential uses, meaning the ground floor office space. The applicant on their site plan, they did provide a parking calculation, which is consistent with that parking schedule adopted by the overlay district. They are providing, I believe, 34 stalls. I don't want to misquote myself. If they were to provide all onsite parking for the combination of uses, they fall four parking stalls short. So that's why they're seeking to opt into the parking district. But as I reviewed the town's adopted strategic parking plan, which was adopted by the Town Board by unanimous vote on June 16th, 2020. This was a strategic parking plan that was done by a consulting firm that was hired by the town. They analyzed the parking situations in the downtown district. This property is located directly across the street from the Court Street parking lot. Now, the strategic parking plan does identify. They basically did a peak analysis during, it was a 10:00 a.m. hour, because that would be considered the peak time for parking demand. This analysis demonstrated that that parking lot across the street from this project is approximately 51% to 65% utilized during the peak parking demand. Do note that the parking lot on Court Street contains approximately 234 parking stalls. So really, for the four parking stalls that they are seeking to opt into the parking district for, you know, I think this strategic study clearly demonstrates that that parking lot can easily absorb four parking stalls during the peak.
I'm surprised that it even gets up to 51, honestly, because I passed by there all the time. It's never.
Even so, overnight, that parking lot's empty.
Correct. And that parking lot, there are a number of parking lots throughout the town which have restrictions, you know, two-hour parking, three-hour parking. This is an unrestricted parking lot, you know, which would facilitate parking 24 hours a day as it needs for the project. And it's also known, you know, during the day, it would be typically, if the office is being utilized, and people are parking onsite, overnight, when the residents of the apartments utilize those parking stalls, the four stalls could be used across the street. So for those reasons, I prepared the draft resolution with the Town Board to assume lead agency and issue negative declaration because aside from that four-stall parking reduction, the project does comply with the base thresholds which were adopted under that Railroad Avenue Overlay District. And this is the next logical step in the project.
So Greg, I did ask you about the EAF. I didn't see that we received the EAF.
Yes, I don't recall if I missed an email or a request for that. I do apologize, but I don't believe I recall seeing that.
I did a search through everything just last night to see if I had it. I did not. So, I mean, for me, even though I do understand the TOD, I would like to be able to review the EAF for this. And I had one question. It's about the adequacy adequacy of training, equipment, and water pressure. Should there be a fire in these five-story, four-story buildings?
I can't comment on that. I mean, again, I did refer these plans to the Riverhead Board of Fire Commissioners on July 8th. I have not even received an acknowledgement that those plans were received. So I cannot comment on, you know, training or adequacy of fire protection services. That would be something I would have to defer to.
So certainly, I would want to have that information. I would want to have that information. I think that's really important because I know some of the fire commissioners have had some concerns along those lines. So maybe you could send that out to them again, or they didn't respond?
I mean, I can call them. I mean, if I send a referral to an agency and they don't comment. I mean, we're not getting to the point of site plan approvals. We're not at that point yet. I can follow up surely with the Board of Fire Commissioners. If you'd like, I can send them another referral. But I mean, again, at this point, it's been five or six weeks, and I haven't even gotten acknowledgement that we've received it.
So maybe something happened. So I would like it if you would send that out again. And for me, I would like to have time to review the EAF because we just got this. I only saw yesterday at 5:00, this was on the, 10 to 5:00, that this was on the agenda.
Are there any other concerns that the Board would like to address? Are there any other specific things that we could address prior to moving forward on the application?
I'm not ready. I want to review the EAF, and I want to hear from the fire commissioners.
I've looked at the plans, and I think right now you've got a closed, dilapidated building. And I think it would be nice to see the site developed. I think this will be a nice enhancement to that area.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when the Board unanimously adopted that overlay district study, I mean, it was done to incentivize, you know, you had a, the MRI building, from what I can garner, it's probably been vacant for close to a decade. So, you know, the overlay district was, you know, adopted in order to incentivize development in this area, so.
Yeah, and I looked at it right from the beginning as an opportunity, a real opportunity to, you know, have investment in the community and really, you know, take care of a lot of these blighted areas.
And certainly, I don't, I don't, oh, go ahead.
Okay, we, we're not ready for the site plan anyway. And so this is, you know, we can look at all these details as they come together. The site plan will cover all those concerns, Catherine, I think. So, you know, I'm going to say that we move forward and see where it goes. And we're going to make sure that everything, all the safety measures, that is our goal. It's the goal of the fire marshals, it's the goal of the planning department, it's the goal of the entire board to make sure that all those safety concerns are. So I don't want to stop any possible project. I don't know where this is going, but we need to see the full site plan and make sure that all the, you know, Ts across, the D's, the Is adopt, Ts across, so, all right.
I think by the, a project like this comes into place, you know, we're looking to redevelop that whole area, hoping for that 10 million dollar grant. That'd be, it'd be nice to have that, and I think, what is it? 20, 20 million dollar grant, excuse me. Projects like this entices other businesses willing to develop down there and to put the, invest is the key word, so I'm for it.
Well, certainly, I agree with the, you know, I certainly agree that it's great to, this has been a building that's long been dilapidated, and I'm told it's in very bad shape. So certainly, I am in agreement with, you know, that it's a good use of the space. But I, and I'm not looking to slow down a project, but I still think it's good to check all the boxes, make sure we do our stuff ahead of time. I want to review the EAF and hear from the fire commissioners. Thank you.
Excellent.
Greg, can I just ask one other question? When a building like this is going to be taken down, this current building?
The MRI building?
Yeah. Are there, like, do they go and do a walkthrough? And just in terms of safety within the community, like, are there any lead walls and structures that need, that they, 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 all that comes in accountability, like, towards what's coming out of there and where it's going?
Correct. When an applicant files, yes, when an applicant files a demolition permit, they do asbestos tests that's required by, you know, state building code. They will assess if there's any hazardous material, if there is found to be any asbestos or any.
I assume there's lead walls or something in there because of where they may have been taken MRIs and, right?
That would all be assessed under the demolition permit. And if there's any materials that need to be handled in a certain way, they'd be handled in accordance with any DEC regulations, health department regulations, et cetera.
Just want to make sure everything goes in the right spot, properly disposed of.
And just to be clear, I'm not making, you know, I don't want to make a decision until I get an opportunity to review the EAF in the next couple of days. And hopefully, you can get back to me pretty quickly about the commissioners.
I'll reach out to the commissioners, absolutely do that.
So that things can keep moving along. But I'm not going to render a decision till I look at, see those two things.
All right. I mean, this resolution wouldn't be up for consideration until the September 8th meeting. So I can absolutely follow up with the Board of Fire Commissioners and get you some answers prior to that.
All right, very good. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Greg, thank you. Okay, next up, I'm going to ask our CDA Director, Dawn Thomas, and her team, Joe Morianna and Frank Messina to come forward to discuss matters surrounding allocation of COVID-19 CARES Act CBGG funds. This is regarding Resolution 2021-553, which was tabled on August 3rd at a Town Board meeting so we can further discuss the proposed allocations of funds. And team, and I know you guys work as a team, and it's been a pleasure to work with you as a team.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And we do, and it's great, so thank you. So just, I've written out a very detailed explanation of how this entire program works, and Frank and Joe work on different components of it as well. So we each have a piece of the presentation. But I want to just go through it so I don't miss anything because it is complicated. And sometimes we jump in in the middle, and it gets jumbled. So just, just by way of background, CDVG stands for Community Development Block Grant. It comes from the New York State Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is sometimes referred to as HUD. And we participate in a consortium of other towns and villages. So the County of Suffolk applies for the funding, and then we work with them, and they administer it for us. In other towns, like Brookhaven, doesn't work with the consortium. But we feel over the years that we've done better working with the consortium in terms of the amount of funding that we do get. So, and Riverhead really is the perfect place for CDVG funding because it's for low to moderate income areas, which we have. And sometimes we can use it for seniors in different capacities, but it is literally restricted to those areas. And downtown Riverhead is an area of persistent poverty and also considered a low to moderate income area. So we qualify for this funding, and we use it very well. So typically, CDVG is an annual funding program. And you'll remember, we have a public hearing, so we do a public notice in the paper, advertising that the funding is available. People who are interested in receiving the funding come, and they testify at the public hearing. So you'll have heard them, they're local public service groups. We could also use the money, and before I go further, for parking and pedestrian improvements. So we use it for downtown a lot, and it works really well for us if we need a small project. Or we often use it to match other grants. So for instance, we're using it to match the DOT bus grant. We used it for matching some of the studies that we needed. For instance, we used it to pay for our economists that we did need to hire to do the benefit cost analysis for the RISE grant. So it's flexible money for us, but we've always, the town has traditionally used it to fund public service groups as well. So it's a tremendous amount of work because it's HUD. So there's a lot of bureaucratic paperwork, and the county works with us through that. And Frank just has within the book of the rules, those are the rules that we have to abide by in providing the funding. And so we proposed the budget, we held the public hearing, we published that in the paper. We recommend the funding plan based on those people who come forward and what other needs we have as a community for parking and pedestrian improvements. And then we work with the county to make sure those are adequate uses for the funding. And then, once they agree, we come back and the Town Board adopts, which is what you have before you today, or at the last meeting, a budget specifying how the money will be expended. And if we ever change that, and you've seen these resolutions before, we need to do a budget modification. So that happens occasionally. They call that a Bud Mod, which is funky. Anyway, so just in terms of public service groups, the annual funding, we've been working with them for the past 20 years, mostly the same seven groups, with a couple of adjustments here and there. Once they are selected, they have to jump through a large set of hoops to get the funding. And it's, we've been able to fund seven groups with $8,000, but this upcoming year, we only are going to have $5,000 for each of those groups because the funding has been cut as we anticipated. So once we have the contract signed, the groups have to go through and fulfill their purposes. The town pays first, so we are out on the plank. And if the money isn't properly documented, if the expenditures aren't documented or the contracts aren't signed properly, you know, they saw the plank off behind us, and we now are stuck with the bill. So it's important to us that we abide by all of the detailed rules and regulations.
Just on that point, because we do have to lay the money out first, it helps that we have an existing relationship with most of these groups because they've already got their money. So by having that relationship with them, we sort of have the carrot in front of them as well to tell them, you need to help us clear the problem with Suffolk County so we can get reimbursed, or perhaps you're not going to get your money next year.
And those groups have been, that we've been working with for the past, most of them for the past 20 years. And I think some of them are actually here today. They understand how it works, they know what they need to do, and they get us that paperwork. And I'll let Joe explain what his role is. But once we get the budget set, each, each public service group gets a subrecipient contract, which is a specific contract that's devised through the program. And then you can go through how it goes when you take over there.
Okay. Just on the reason why we can't add a lot more groups. Suffolk County, out of their allotment that they give to all of their members, is only allowed 15% of their total allocation. Compared to the other towns, we're well above 15% of our, most of the other towns happen to use the money for their own.
What do you mean by Suffolk County is only allowed to use 15%?
15% of what you're doing.
Suffolk County gets a federal allocation, which they disperse to their members. We're one of their members. We happen to take up a larger percentage of that 15% because some other towns choose to use the funds just for their own projects. So we asked the county to allow us to give to more groups, but.
So we have a bigger share of that 15% total than other towns. So we may have 20%, and they may have 9% or something. So we get more because we spend it well, and we get it reimbursed.
My point was that we're not really allowed to just keep adding more and more groups for the reason that the federal government wouldn't be happy with Suffolk County. And also, I'm not sure if it makes financial sense for the town to take money out of the pockets of the general taxpayers as we can do a lot of good projects downtown. But back to.
So you get a certain amount, and then you allocate how that is used, correct?
Right, for instance.
You allocate it.
Right.
We recommend it. You allocate it. We allocate nothing.
I think that we got $155,000 last year.
But you don't submit the groups ahead of time?
No, so the $155,000 wasn't just for groups, it was for the town's total allocation. So a large portion of that, say, goes to parking improvements. Or in the case of the COVID money, we gave money, we got two new buses for the senior center.
And when we do that, we're serving the entire town taxpayer base.
And the seniors, and it's certainly, the town has fiscal constraints right now. So I'm not sure if they would have, I don't think we really had it in the budget unless there was a dire, dire emergency to purchase two brand-new vehicles. And I think the town's out-of-pocket on that was $30,000.
Actually, it's four vehicles because we, not including the safe vehicle and the meals-on-wheels vehicle as well. So four vehicles editing the senior center fleet is tremendous.
Which they really needed. And, God, it saves the taxpayers a lot of money.
And Frank wrote a grant through New York State DOT, and they were awarded that funding, and that allowed the purchase of the two.
Yeah, that was an 80%, 80/20 grant. And the town was, the local match was 20%, which is the $30,000.
Which is, so we use CDVG money to match that grant. So now it's no cost to the taxpayers. So that's the way, it's a great funding. But I wanted you to talk about the subrecipient contracts and the work that needs to be done to get them through the process.
I guess the, out of the, we're currently funding seven groups. I think the newest group that was added, that they have, they still haven't gotten any funding because we don't have that cycle yet. But I guess we added the retreat about two years ago. We don't have that, that funding cycle yet, and we added the butterfly effect probably four or five years ago. We, in our regular cycle, there is also CAP, two soup kitchens or food pantries. Maureen's Haven serves the homeless population. Each of those groups has to fill out a subrecipient contract with us in which they are advised all of the requirements. And then they have to complete a pretty arduous list of insurance requirements, including naming the town as as, as fully insured, and also that we're not contributing to that policy.
Do they have to delineate exactly who and what it's being used for?
Once they're, so then they have all that paperwork.
Right.
There's insurance requirements, then they certainly have to give us a detailed list of expenses.
Okay.
And then the Suffolk County and the federal government requires monthly reporting forms. In a lot of cases, it, it'll list who got the actual benefit in certain cases, in terms of the actual privacy, the homeless population, or.
So at the end of the day, there's a paper trail exactly to who was benefiting from these monies.
Yes.
At least how many people and their particular demographics for each month. And they have to have all of that. We don't generally have, I mean, it does, it's a paper-intensive process. I work closely with Frank to sort everything out before we give it to the county. We also, Frank and I work with Dan McCormick in the Town Attorney's Office to look over all of the insurance stuff. And Dan does a good job of protecting the town by, he's very tough to make sure that all of the, all of those insurance requirements are all met. And I go back and forth with a lot of the groups to say, they're still not happy. The insurance policy has to say this, and.
There's a lot of back and forth. And just, you know, not to make a big deal, but we don't have an administrator, we don't have an admin in our office, we don't have an account clerk type of this. So all this paperwork is done by staff. We don't have someone to help, no one answers our phones, we do that all ourselves. So it's a lot of paperwork, and we handle it. And then, once the subrecipient contracts are signed, after all of those public hearings and public notices and discussions, and the paperwork is filled out, then they go spend their money, and Frank then handles the reimbursement part of it. So I'll just kick it over to you, and you can explain how reimbursement works.
Yep. Well, everything is all first instance funding, so we have, it has to be spent first. And then we have to compile all the paperwork, all the receipts. We have to pay the subrecipient groups. And then, once we have proof of payment, we put together a whole package. These are just a couple of packages that we've put together for, you know, different public service groups in the different years. And we submit to the county for reimbursement, and they go through everything. And, you know, we get reimbursed that way. So it's a lengthy process, so.
Very labor, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
No, it's just labor-intensive for a small amount of money. These groups are getting $8,000, and next year, they'll get $5,000. So, and I know that a lot of those groups patch the funding that they get annually together to do different things. So for instance, they might have an employee that they have hired in the past that they use this piece of funding to patch together to get somebody. And they. patch together to get somebody and they depend on it, they budget for it, they depend on it annually. Um, and so it's important to to those groups um that they receive it, so.
No, it's okay, uh, so yeah, it is a lengthy uh process. And uh, we do everything pretty much as a team, so there's a lot of oversight. And uh, you know, we haven't had any instances where um, you know, our reimbursements have been kicked back. So um, but it was a a very long process just to get that that little bit of money back in reimbursement.
Yeah.
But we have had times where we had to go back to the sub recipient and say, the county has a problem, can you work with them? Usually, we get involved as well. And ultimately we get reimbursed, but there are times when the the town is fronting that money for over a year until everything is completely satisfactory.
And this, I'm just, this.
Which we don't have that particular problem when we do an actual town project. Because we're able to more easily control what Suffolk County wants and needs.
Yeah, that's very simple. So this is just a spreadsheet that Frank keeps and this is just twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. Uh, and I also forgot to mention the home improvement program, which there's a a part of this funding that goes to our home improvement program. So that is where we do the repairs, Dan Thompson in our office runs that program, he's here part-time. And we get a small amount of funding and we're able to do repairs to homes for seniors, the policy that the board adopted with seniors. Um, and so most often, we're doing mobile homes repairs. And it's an important program for the town and we did get uh confirmation that we're getting quite a bit more money this year. We've had a two-year waiting list for that program. Uh, people really are in need and we do want to serve them, but it's hard because we let, last year we got twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And very often, these mobiles need, and they have to be brought up to code, so we can't just repair one thing, we have to repair the entire thing. So more often than not, the repairs, the the cost of the repairs well exceeds the value of the home, which is unfortunate, but it's the only way to do it. And there are people who are really deeply in need of that funding too. So um, so that gets us to the CARES Act. So CARES Act was done as an amendment to the twenty nineteen Community Development Black Round Contract, which COVID didn't even exist in twenty nineteen, but whatever. So um, we had, there were three rounds of CARES Act funding. Um, we received funding from all three, we only administered two. So the first one was administered by us and the third one is the one that you're discussing now, that's being administered by us. Round two was for rental assistance and that was administered through Suffolk County and for us as part of that consortium. So um, so round one was, we were dealing with this in March of twenty twenty. So if you can imagine, we were all working from home and um, we had, we were told by email and conversations with the county that we were going to get this funding for, originally, we requested over three hundred thousand, we wound up getting a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. However, it was great because we were able to get money to the groups that we know were serving the the community that was really in need at that point. So and but at that point, we had no ability to contact or talk to anybody else. So we really felt comfortable using the groups that we've been using for years because we know that they know the drill. They had to come up with the paperwork to get reimbursed.
When we made those awards, we were all working from home.
So and.
But this money is specifically for COVID related.
COVID relief and recovery, yes, and that's what it's for. So and the and the difference between the normal CDBG and the CARES Act was that we could use it to fund private entities to help them survive through the pandemic. So in twenty, the round one, we were, used it to purchase the safe vehicle, which uh facilitated the deliveries of medicine and groceries and uh medical appointments to seniors. And we also purchased a new Meals on Wheels vehicle, which was essential at that time. And um, the BIDMA was given funding, the Chamber was given funding, the BIDMA's funding was spent on, they were able to work globally, so we didn't have to have individual individual contracts with individual restaurants. They distributed PPE, they bought the equipment for Dine on Twenty-Five.
Makes perfect sense.
All that stuff. The Chamber was doing education, advertising um and helping people get the um PPP loans and those things. And also purchasing PPE and distributing that to the businesses downtown. Open Arms is um a a food pantry, Bread and More is a soup kitchen. Catherine Holden Care does home visits for um, the Homebound. Uh, CAP was awarded funding also, and then we had five thousand for administrative costs. And that was all done, you all, those were resolutions and discussions that you had and that was done. And then round two was the rental relief and then round three was only seventy-five thousand dollars. So um, we were, you know, pressed to figure that out. And that was also, we didn't get this funding until late winter, early spring of twenty-one. So we weren't made aware that we were getting it.
I was gonna say, you didn't know in advance that that was even coming.
Right, so we we um we know, we knew we needed to match the bus grant, which we had received at that point. And the senior center needs a walk-in cooler, which we felt was really important for resiliency for them in the future, should something like this happen again. Um, the aquarium, we had spoken to, they had had to close their doors, but not unlike other businesses downtown who had gotten money through the BIDMA and the Chamber in round one, they couldn't shut down their business because they needed to take care of the animals, they have.
Just to go back to the refrigeration, that that actually becomes a huge uh play for the other um food pantries, the large ones like I'm involved in.
Yes.
Because they had asked me several times during the COVID thing, can we stage any food? And if we didn't have refrigeration, it had to be a one-day event and so they would drop it and we would distribute it. But to have the refrigeration is key, especially under these emergency situations.
Yes, so we were looking at that, but we're also looking at keeping downtown afloat because the restaurants were closing and people were really under the gun and they they were laying off employees. The aquarium had to keep their staff and also to maintain the Marine Mountain Rescue Center. And they had asked for some help and we suggested that we could help them with PPE and cleaning supplies. They asked for forty thousand, we recommended that they get twenty.
I think it's important to also note with the aquarium, you know, they're our primary downtown anchor, but any other year, under typical CDBG funding, they're not an eligible recipient, but.
But I, you know, I want to add because I personally know what happened with the museum. Um, I had Tracy Stark had mentioned to me that they were about to move their animals in the middle of COVID and the shutdown. And we knew what that might lead to. And it quite actually, it frightened a lot of us to know that our anchor was going to remove their animals because they needed care. PPE, we were under pandemic, nobody knew what direction we were going in.
And they fell into a strange category because if you remember, the state was only authorizing certain businesses to open up and they were in a an odd category that really probably were more like a museum and less like a entertainment. So uh, and it was, we were anxious to get them open because of that reason. They they provide the people that go to the restaurant, so we felt it was an appropriate request and we recommended that be funded.
And I, and and Dawn, I remember when I inquired where the animals were going, they said they weren't going to be distributed anywhere that would take them.
Yeah.
And at different locations and again, it's a pandemic, it's under chaos and.
Right, so even though um we felt it was important to help out downtown's one major anchor, at this point, they will not be eligible under non.
COVID stuff, yeah.
Right, and so this is a one-shot deal for them, whereas most of the other public service groups that that serve distressed populations are eligible.
Annually.
Annually, yes.
So they got, they got the CDBG and the round three, my.
The aquarium, no, the aquarium only got round three.
We're just talking about the round three, which is what we talked, which is what we talked about the other day.
Right.
Okay, so I just want to add, I mean, because the public doesn't know, these are the things that we dealt behind closed doors under pandemic. Um, so I, when I got word that this was happening, um, Steve alone was coming here for a meeting and I myself, I, we spoke to him and we asked him, you know, to please help the our anchor store and uh, by eleven fifty-two PM, we got an email from Dr. Pigott saying that you can open a half fifty percent capacity.
Yeah, fifty percent.
They also had excellent plans um that a lot of the businesses use on safety.
Yeah.
And so that expedited and uh, there's, you know, and it's still struggling, so.
No, and it's important to downtown and it has always been important to downtown, so we felt that was an appropriate request and we recommended funding and that left us with fifteen thousand dollars. So we had recommended, we had um multiple requests and I think you saw them at the public hearing and we had um, in particular, we recommended Easton Arts, they had requested.
We're on round three now.
Round three.
Yeah, could you just refresh us on the allocation there for round three?
So was the walk-in cooler and the buses, the match for the buses?
This is three.
Yep.
The aquarium?
Which was forty thousand, right?
That was forty thousand, walk-in cooler, that was forty.
Yep, and the buses with the bus match, those those two were forty together.
And that was forty together.
And and when we spend money on the town, that's money that the taxpayers don't have to pay, so we felt that was really important to do. And then um, the next was the Long Island Aquarium, which that requested forty thousand, we we recommended twenty. The uh, Easton Arts Council requested twenty-five thousand, we recommended five. Church of the Harvest rec- requested between five and ten, we recommended five.
And they had just been paid ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna.
Just a few weeks ago.
To go aside note from there, so Church of the Harvest came to us in round, another round of CDBG funding. And we hadn't worked with them before on it, but they do a delivery component of their pantry. So that we felt was really merited some help, so, but we also hadn't worked with them on all this paperwork before. So in order to say, you get the CDBG money, we felt like we wanted to make sure that we could get through this process with Church of the Harvest. Um, so what we did was, we had a very small amount of money in a fund, which is recapture money. So if if an affordable house got sold before it was supposed to be sold, that recapture money comes back to the town. It was, I think the total fund was like ten thousand dollars, right? So so we worked with the Church of the Harvest and we awarded them, we awarded, we recommended that they receive that funding, the ten thousand dollars. So and they, had they been part of the twenty nineteen group that they had asked to be part of, those people still haven't gotten money. The funding that we had was immediately available and already has been distributed. So they were, they received ten thousand dollars prior to asking for the five to ten in round three.
That's great.
It was great, we felt really good about it and the delivery component was a really great thing, we thought it was very good. And that was why, when we came to round three, we also recommended for what they requested, we recommended, they had asked for five to ten, we recommended five. And also um, Stop the Violence asked for uh, Stop the Violence asked for fifteen and we recommended five. So the three groups that we felt we could fund were all, it was evenly distributed between those groups. And the other, you know, Church of the Harvest received what, basically what they asked for, five to ten. So we felt that those were reasonable and rational.
Were there public service agencies or community agencies that applied and didn't get any funding?
Yes, there were. If you remember, there were some that came to the mic, there was another food pantry that came to the mic.
Okay.
We didn't recommend them at all and then um you know, it was a very small amount of money, it was only five thousand dollars and, but we knew Church of the Harvest was still working on their delivery program, it was still important and essential and we want to fund them. So this was our vote of confidence to say, we feel like you're ready to do the CDBG because Joe worked with them very closely to make sure that they could meet the demographic paperwork, get the contract signed, provide the insurance. Those are things we didn't know when we worked on the ten thousand dollar award, so.
So it sounds like going forward, they will certainly be included in any of these CD.
Well, this is up to you all, so this is, you know, so this has become an issue, CDBG uh, and the distribution of CDBG, two years ago, became an issue. We've been working with the same groups for twenty years or more and we feel, and we've been able to work other groups. And for instance, Council for Unity is a great example, they came to us, Butch Langhorn, I think, came to the board and asked for funding. The board recommended that funding, we hadn't worked with them before, we tried to work with them, they did not participate at all, so we had to return that funding. So when we don't perform the way we're supposed to, that's a black check mark on us. We don't get, then we we get a bad reputation. So we're very, very cautious. So you'll hear us be, I know it's 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 a very difficult situation you are in because it's, you have a very small amount of money and you're trying to make everybody happy, well, it's, somebody is going to be unhappy unfortunately.
Right, like we, it's just important for the board to know that we just can't add unlimited amounts of groups. We, since, and especially now that the funding has been cut from eight to five for
Yeah, for twenty twenty.
twenty twenty, which you guys, the hearing this fall will be for twenty twenty-two, but we could probably anticipate funding in about the five thousand dollar range, which is the lowest that we're allowed to give under HUD. HUD doesn't want the board to give fifty awards of one thousand dollars each because then you're clearly just playing politics.
You're not making an impact.
And you're not making any impact whatsoever and you have a ton more paperwork.
They want us to be able to actually demonstrate that you're making an impact, so five thousand dollars.
Will we ever get any more funding under CARES?
Maybe.
Possibly.
There might be around four, there might be around four.
We're anticipating around four, there is uh, in Washington, um, some talk about it and uh, I think pretty sure that um, we'll know in a couple of months.
Yeah, and one of the reasons we've kept the application pro- not, there's no applicator process, we've kept this process very very informal is because all of the groups that are working for you when they get these contracts are volunteers. They have one or two people working in their place, they they don't have time to fill out a complicated application process and justify their award. So we basically working with people, they come and meet with us and and if we think they're good, we send them to you. So we're, we're in the process of doing that, we've been doing that, it's worked well for twenty years, up until two years ago. And I'll just mention this, the former supervisor's staff took the resolution that you have before you now and changed it unbeknownst to us. And had that change gone through because they wanted to fund somebody else, we would have received zero because we would have missed the deadline. So this is the kind of thing that we're concerned about, we want you to be aware that this is a very complicated program and we think we do a fair job of administering it on behalf of the board, but if you would like, there's some other options that you have to consider. So what we are suggesting that you think about, if if indeed you want to consider more groups and have a a competition process for the funding, um, then I, we think you should set up a committee. That committee can be comprised of of people that you think would work and they can review these rules. They could come up with an application process, they can administer that application process because we don't, we can't do that. We don't have the time and we don't have a secretary or an administrative person to help us. And then they can determine who should benefit from the funding and then make a recommendation to you and then you can decide which ones of those groups get funded and which don't. But if we're going to do that this year, that needs to be done immediately because in October will be our next round of funding and that public hearing will start. And so um, and then they could collect those applications, they can review them to make sure that they meet those requirements, that they meet all the insurance requirements and then tell us which ones they want to put in.
That sounds like you're asking a lot out of a committee to me.
Yeah.
Well, it's what we do.
I know.
So we're your committee currently, but if you're not happy with what we're, if you're unhappy with what we're doing, which which we're we're kind of feeling, then um, you know, we are, we are happy to work with whatever.
Not at all, I think you guys do a tremendous job.
If you have any questions for any of our service groups, I know we have.
Yeah, we have a few here.
Actually, I want to make, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a couple of comments before we move on, that's okay.
I just want to just say who's here.
Okay.
Butterfly Effects.
CAP.
CAP is here.
Maureen's Haven.
Church of the Harvest.
Church of the Harvest and Maureen's Haven is here.
And the aquarium is also here.
And the aquarium, yes.
Okay, so wait, I I think, Dawn, I know that the, you know, you are an attorney and to read insurance law, I don't necessarily think that you should put that on, you know, certain people, that you guys are the experts on that. Um, I think that a a better avenue may be when the money becomes available, we let the board know and let them also make who they feel and.
And that does, that process does happen, it's done, there's an advertisement in the paper.
Yes.
You all adopt the resolution to schedule that public hearing, there's a public hearing and the groups come and they present to you. So this, that is the process already.
I think we've, we've put it in an email in the beginning where everybody has it, because sometimes.
Yeah, well, we can definitely alert you to the upcoming stuff, yes.
When the process happens and you forget. Yeah, and that way, every, you know, the board is equally um, uh, can participate equally.
So in fairness to you guys, I think you do a great job, a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And the only reason that I jumped on board with tabling this was so that I could understand better exactly what the process is.
And that's why we wanted to give you the full. And that's why we wanted to give you the full.
Good.
Experience of CDBG.
Excellent.
Frank, if the next opportunity that you can, can we untable it? Would you agree to untable it?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I would like to make a few comments, I'd like to jump in here. I'm glad you guys came and talked about this today, I did ask to have this on the agenda. So, I'm, I like to be apprised of everything. I don't actually feel like we need a committee, I just think discussions like this or getting apprised or making sure the board knows ahead of time what are all the groups and what are all the allocations, that's actually more important to me because we actually, we have to make the decision ourselves.
Right, and that's why the resolution goes to work session and you have the full, our full recommendation at that time to discuss. I was surprised that we didn't get called in to discuss it.
I didn't think I had seen the allocations on there on the first resolution, but then I saw it on there that night, so.
Well, it's on the, it's on the, the one that goes into mid-track.
Yeah, so just a couple of things I wanted to go over. I know that, you know, the groups came in, were those, all the groups that came in for the public hearing, are those all the groups that applied?
Those are all the groups that we, that applied, that, you know, asked, yes.
So, there were, there were another groups that came in that weren't able to come that night or something?
Not that we're aware of, but there was a, a group that came that didn't send a letter. We usually ask them to send a letter to, to the board, so we, you know, please send a letter and we'll, you know, deal with it that way, that way we don't lose track of people. And then, but sometimes we'll just come to the public hearing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we always know all the groups that are, that are coming in, that's why I'm asking that. And, you know, is the only announcement that the public hearing is just the public hearing notice that goes in the news review?
Yes, yes.
I mean, I think if there was some other way even to just make an announcement at the meeting that that's coming up, some other way to get the word out because it's possible that some groups that are in need may not know to look in the paper and read the public news.
Usually, in addition to the legal notice, it generally gets some kind of article in both local and news review that the hearing is coming up.
It doesn't always though, because I know, I, I know a couple of times it did not. So, I just think it's good to get the word out because you don't know, you know, you don't know exactly what groups might be newly formed in the community.
I don't know, you guys want more competition?
Yeah, right.
Well, I mean, the.
You have to be fair.
I know, I know. I'm only joking, I'm only joking.
The point is, yeah, the point is to serve our whole community.
The point is to serve, but if we, you know, the more groups that apply, it does make it harder for the board that a lot of groups are going to get left out. And certainly, because we got the word out, that's how Church of the Harvest heard about the funding a couple of years ago and.
And made the request.
Yeah.
Which we worked with them to receive funding.
I think some people reached out to them actually.
Yes.
And I'm gonna say too, that, you know, when everything shut down last year and we couldn't come in for meetings and I wanted to work, I made it my quest to get in touch with all the food pantries and people that were serving within the community because at that time, you know, my thinking was, well, how can I help my community right now? And I thought, well, there's a lot of people going to food pantries and soup kitchens possibly that, you know, you could pick up from, that haven't gone before. There were a lot of people that were struggling to put food on their table. So, I did reach out and, and get a good sense of all the food pantries and tried to help stock them, make sure everybody was getting enough food. And one of the groups that I did work with a lot actually was the Church of the Harvest and I know that their shelves were getting cleared out regularly because I was trying to help get food to them and Frank and I both worked on the food distribution last year. There were quite a few food distributions that we worked on and then we would take the food that was left over because like you said Frank, they can't keep the food and make sure.
That's, that's the real importance of the refrigeration going forward, that, that really is a game changer for all of the bigger food.
But certainly when, you know, food was being brought by Island Harvest to our community, I did not want to see the food leave our community. So, at that point, we were, I was calling people, I know I called you guys and I called Open Arms, I was calling around and saying, can you send someone over to get this food? So, I do know the Church of the Harvest, I'm, I'm glad they are in the group. I did try to get them, I did try to get them into the group a couple of years ago and I feel like if, you're saying if they had been in the group, they would have, it would have been more automatic for them.
No.
Once you're on the list.
Because we had a full boat of groups and then when we had the March of twenty, round one, we, you know, who could get insurance if they didn't already have it the way we needed it? Who could get all this paperwork done? Who could do all this stuff? So, we, once we got back in the office and we were able to work, we were able to get Church of the Harvest the ten thousand dollars cash pretty quick because we knew they needed it. And it actually worked out better because the other groups are still waiting, they still don't have their money.
If she had gotten.
So, so it worked out great.
If.
You know, and she got more than they got because they got eight and she got ten.
If Gwen had gotten the funding at your first request in two thousand nineteen, she would not have had the funding yet, but she got that ten thousand dollars in July.
So, we put our heads together, we're like, what do we do, what do we do? How can we get funding for this important function of food pantry with delivery? Because that was the key, because other food pantries were just food pantries and if you remember from two years ago, we had this discussion, the, the issue was, if we're funding duplicative public service types of groups, so we had recommended adding the retreat because that was a different type of group. We already had a food pantry and a soup kitchen and a homeless shelter and cap and, so we felt to just kind of diversify what we were doing was important because if we keep adding the same type of service. But when they added the delivery component, that became unique and that was really important during the pandemic. So, we felt, let's figure out how to get this money and not worry about all this paperwork, which we did. And then, and now, because Joe and Frank worked with Church of the Harvest to make sure that they understood what they needed, they have everything and that's why they were recommended for round three. So, we're where we want them to be for sure. It's just, I understand, it's tough because it's a very small amount of money going to, you know, a very small amount of people, so.
But not the last amount of money. Not the last.
No, it won't be the last amount of money for sure.
So, when you're talking about that they got ten thousand, I knew on one of the other rounds, groups got ten thousand, not one bread and more got ten thousand as well, or?
No, the ten thousand wasn't CDBG at all. It was recapture money, it was a small fund that we've now exhausted to fund their food pantry. So, that, we did not fund them through CDBG before. And ten thousand, we were never be above eight for any public service groups in the past.
Some of the public service groups through COVID-1.
Yes, COVID-1, yes, through CARES-1, they got ten, those groups got ten.
They will get ten.
They will get, they still don't have it.
They have their contracts here.
They still don't have it, right?
They don't have the money, but yes.
Yeah, even though this started in March of twenty-twenty, those groups from round one still aren't funded.
Well, certainly, we can agree, it's always a priority to feed people within the community, so that's, that is a priority for me. But I, I was aware of the struggles they were having at the aquarium. I, I was working with everyone and pleased that we could get them to open up partially for a while because that was really needed and I was very aware of the struggles they were having because they were taking care of the animals during that time. And certainly in the downtown businesses and such were, were getting hit hard, so, you know, lots of people were having trouble. Just in the big picture, my point is, I'd like to get the word out more if we could, aside from just the public notice, just because I don't know that every group necessarily knows to check that all the time. And I like the idea, I like what happened today, I like to have the discussion so that the board is apprised of the groups or how, how you guys would like to allocate the money, I'd like to be involved in that process. And I think those are my only points that I wanted to make.
Okay, great. And I just want to mention.
Thank you, thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, I just want to mention quickly that we had a lot of groups and I want to thank
Frank, who was so excited every time we got a food delivery, he'd be like raising his feet and we had the National Grid who came out forward and we have food drives for them. We had the Sucker Foundation that donated ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That was wonderful.
And we distributed from my, from my office, some of the council member were involved in the distribution.
You guys got some.
We got the New York State.
We were all there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, the New York State Department of Agent came out and while we're talking about food, Donna from my office worked endlessly to start the Riverhead Safe Program and seniors can call any of the pharmacies that were on the list and we still have it, it's still available, they could call a gallon, they could call a restaurant, as long as they paid for it, we had the police department deliver it. And we have people from all over, including Southampton, trying to join in our list. The only thing that we, and businesses did come, wanted to be part of the program, but when we got a liquor store wanting to come in, he said, I think we're gonna stop there. That could be delivering, especially under the, under a pandemic where people are depressed, but.
He acknowledged too, Jerry and the Mermaid did like a ton of stuff for everybody downtown. It was wonderful to see the whole community come together during really difficult time work, yes.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think anybody did better than us tonight.
No, we took the lead, we did, we first was outside dining.
You guys did a great job, thank you.
Well, we, we, we work with a, a great team, we work for you, we're happy to work for you and we're grateful for the opportunity to do what we do every day because it is really good stuff, so.
I do want to, yeah, I do want to chime in because the point was made, riverhead really did come together during this time. You know, I was just seeing everything and Jerry and the Mermaid was doing that, great service and then somebody put a Facebook site together, I think it's Easton Takeout or something to help restaurants stay afloat. And that's one thing that I think is great about our community, riverheaders step up in times of need and help one another.
Yep, and it did the gift card exchange program.
They had the gift cards.
And that was great for the hospital workers, I know Anthony Maris was cooking big meals for the hospital workers.
Yeah, I know, we, we, we went together and we bought meals for the hospital here too, yeah, that was great, really great.
So, we kept, we kept the businesses in business.
Yep.
Kept ourselves afloat, we did lose some restaurants downtown, there was no doubt, but we are working very hard to make sure that our downtown comes alive again.
Better days ahead.
Yes.
Better days ahead.
Yes, it's very, very promising.
I do have to say, my favorite event though was the tractor parade.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was good stuff.
The tractor parade was amazing. But anyway, I would love to see the spreadsheet that you have, that's on board and I'm always willing to help with you guys or do anything that needs to be done, have the discussion because certainly we want to keep food on the tables of our community and there's other good things that have been able, that you've been able to do with this money as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John, thank you, Joe and Frank, and Frank Brayrod, are you gonna put forth about resolution?
I will, yeah, I'll call to untable it.
Untable it? We agree to untable it?
Yes.
Okay, so moving forward, and our last discussion item for today is on code enforcement and today I'm gonna ask our deputy town attorney, Eric Coward, and our code enforcement chief officer, Richard Downs, to please come forward and just give us a little update on their vaccinations, wherever you feel comfortable.
You can sit up here, I got lots of room at my table.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, guys.
I know that we're still under the, the moratorium on evictions and, you know, we've been talking about that and I just wanted to bring you in. I know that we hired a new code enforcement officer, Rich, is he being trained?
Yes, he's being trained, he started Monday, he's being trained as we speak.
Okay.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, I like him.
I think, I think he's gonna do well.
Yeah, we're excited, but, you know, welcome aboard and sometime have him stop by, I'd like to say hello to him.
Absolutely.
And so now we have to take a little different direction. I know that there's been a lot of code that we're trying to work on, some of the code has to be tightened up, we've had discussions, the purpose of the discussion is just to see where we're going and hear from the public and sometimes you have to adjust, that's what good legislation is all about. And I know that prior to me taking office, there was never a Supreme Court decision put forward and last year we've had, I believe, five Supreme and you had a warrant also, you had extra, additional summonses because of the presidential and the governor's mandate on non-evictions, unfortunately, hopefully it's gonna end very soon, scheduled to end soon, soon. And so I just wanted you to give us a brief update.
Okay, year to date, we are approximately at two hundred and sixty-three complaints and at this rate, I'm sure we'll be over six hundred at year's end, okay? Year to date, we have issued approximately four hundred and twenty-two justice court tickets. Eric's quite busy over there in justice court. In comparison to last year, in total, we received approximately four hundred and forty-five complaints, that's from last year's numbers, okay? So, we're on course to go well beyond that, is my prediction, to six hundred. Out of those four hundred and twenty-two complaints that we have received, we have received twenty-five overcrowded complaints for this year alone, okay? As you know, we don't only handle overcrowded complaints, we handle a number of different types of things as I outlined, I think, into my, to my last email to the board, which was, let's see, I think a couple of weeks ago, did everybody receive that email? Okay, so just to run through some of the things that we handle other than, you know, the overcrowded complaints, which, you know, usually get the most attention, we handle bamboo complaints, that's Mr. Rockwell's favorite.
Why?
Bluff areas, we deal with that, we deal with bulk garbage complaints, site plan violations, litter, dumpster complaints, we all know about the dumpsters. We have some confidential investigations that we handle with the police department, dangerous conditions, high grass, high weeds, which is a real big one right now because a lot of the vacant properties, you know, abandoned properties weren't cutting their grass. Illegal apartments, illegal signs, we deal with the light ordinance, no CNO, no building permits, we do a lot of that stuff for the building department, they just don't have the enforcement capabilities over there to write tickets, so we handle a lot of the stuff for them. Noise ordinance, that's a hot topic right now. We have a couple of big investigations going on with regard to a couple of properties for noise violations.
And unfortunately, we can't talk about that right now because.
No, we can't talk about the locations.
But you can just identify that we do have those.
Yes, those are pending, yes.
Yeah, pending.
Of course, the overcrowded housing, I mean, in my last report, I, we had eleven, which was two weeks ago and now we're up to twenty-five, so we still have some that haven't been investigated yet that we're looking to get on for like next week or the week after, that, that appear to be possibly pretty bad, okay? We, we deal with the unfenced pools, people that don't have permits for the pools, general property maintenance code violations in New York State, rental permits is a hot one, residential litter on properties, solid waste, we get a lot of complaints from individuals about people that put out their garbage pails prior to pickup. And people are putting out yard debris, lawn clippings, which we don't accept, the garbage carters are just, they, they won't pick it up, okay?
And by the way, it's just unnecessary.
It's unnecessary.
It's unnecessary, just mulch your lawn, how about that?
Well, you can mulch a lawn or you can get a town permit.
Right.
And bring it to the town.
I've never begged any, any grass clipping.
It actually adds nitrogen to them.
It absolutely does.
Yep.
Do you think you know about grass?
Yeah, he thinks he knows about it. We deal with the streets and sidewalks, transient rentals, which is another crazy one that's really blowing up right now, we got a lot of transient rentals that are popping up all over the Airbnbs, vacation by owner rentals, they're, they're really getting bad in the town, we're getting a lot of complaints about that. And rightfully so, because if somebody's gotta live next door to a house that you see an influx of different people every weekend, I think I would be upset too, so.
And just on that point, we do have one case that's a transient rental pending in Supreme Court, there is a motion pending with the judge for a restraining order right now and.
A little louder, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we, we do have one case on a transient rental that's particularly Oh, I'm sorry. So we, we do have one case on a transient rental that's particularly bad pending in Supreme Court right now. Um, there is a motion, an order to show cause that we prepared. Seeking a restraining order against the owner to basically prohibit, you know, further rental, pending a more formal, more formal litigation of the case.
The town code is thirty day on the rental?
It's under twenty-nine.
Under twenty-nine.
It's twenty-nine.
Yes, yep, okay.
So yeah, transient rentals are getting, you know, a lot of attention. Uh, we handle some trespass violations, unlawful taxi cabs. That was another law that was drafted. I believe, probably about six years ago, seven years ago. Um, we deal with that. Unregistered vehicles on properties. And of course, unsafe buildings and unsafe structures. We have quite a few of those in the town and a lot of vacant unkempt structures in the town. Where we use our blighted property code on those particular locations. So. Wetland violations, we deal with. We had four of those. Uh, zoning violations and zoning use violations.
Okay, so Richie.
That's a number of, uh, that's, that's everything pretty much.
I know, which is a lot. I know that, and Eric, thank you, because I know you've been working hard on the code. Um, and I think that, um, well, Tim's not here today, but. Think we should all have a meeting with the two code liaisons and we just wanna structure everything a little bit, um, more and so we can, um, have a operational. Breakdown of where we're going, because we have the new officer and hopefully when the, um, moratorium is lifted, we might have, and I, I know, I know this for sure from being in law enforcement. That if you give somebody a summons and it's old, it, when it gets to court, they throw it out. Um, or you have to update the case. So even the ones that we put, because there was a moratorium, there's a possibility that you might have to update them, correct? Or?
Well, those cases are pending. Uh, the ones, the ones where the owners have come in and complained that they can't have the property vacated as a result of the moratorium.
Right.
Judges have been good about giving them.
Extra time.
Sort of a long date. Usually there's been made returnable sometime in September. So, but in the interim, there is typically violations that they can address.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, with respect to, so some of them may not have a rental permit. Just because you can't evict someone because they're not paying rent doesn't mean you can't get a rental permit. So, we've still been requiring them to get a rental permit, which makes property subject to an inspection by code enforcement. If there's property maintenance violations, unregistered vehicles, those need, those get addressed. If they have illegal structures. That they can't get certificates of occupancy for, those come down, uh, or they, or they're directed to get building permits and have those, uh, sealed. So, while, while the eviction moratorium stalls some of the prosecutions, the owners aren't just being allowed to sit on their hands. Because, you know, typically, once you get to that point in justice court, you have other violations that you'd like you to take care of as well.
Yeah, and we, we do have a couple of properties that have already been investigated by us that are sort of, were affected by the moratorium. Whereby the landlord can't evict the tenants, you know, from the house.
And, and the goal here is not to evict people or put anybody out. The goal is here for the safety and the welfare of the individuals and for firefighters. I, I know, I was speaking to a firefighter actually this morning, and he said he went to a location and the, the basement, well, you probably know about the case. The basement was subdivided and they were lost. They didn't know where the door was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it was because they kept on coming across doors and it was, wasn't just one door to the basement. So, the goal here, we can't lose focus and I know that, you know, often people take it in a different direction. It's for the safety, especially. I mean, just recently, there was a home where they had six college kids in, in, in the basement. Uh, or just sleeping in ma, on mattresses. And if they're, illegal basement and, you know.
Well, by the way, that was, I mean, not that I'm condoning it, but that was con, Tomcats, I think. Those ball players or something?
Uh, Catherine, I don't think that, that you should be labeling a, a, a unit. Um, I know that you made phone calls on that behalf to support it. Let's not go there. Uh, we need to protect the public.
No, I just inquired. I didn't make, I just inquired, but that's.
Nobody should be sleeping on a mattress in a basement.
Yeah, especially six college.
Period.
No, I agree. I agree.
Young kids in, in an illegal, uh, and that's what we hear. And I was mortified to, to, to hear of those conditions. So.
So, so I have a couple of things I wanted to ask you guys. Um, certainly, certainly we want to be able to give you the tools that you need. I mean, unsafe, um, you know, unsafe housing is a major issue and a concern in our town. So we want to be able to give you whatever you need.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and maybe you, you can offer up some suggestions. But I wanted to ask, I know in Southampton, you know, of course they have six code enforcement officers, which is helpful.
We're getting there.
Yes, we're getting closer. Yes, I know. I'm excited about the new guy because I got to meet him. But I know in Southampton, they, they, they are, they have someone on twenty-four hours. So they are, let's say PD goes to, you know, PD is at something, the police department's at something. Just like you could call the fire marshal in, they can call a code enforcement officer. And wouldn't that be helpful if we had someone twenty-four hours so that, you know, they could come in right away? Because some police officers have told me, you know, there's a situation where they need to bring code in and then, but sometimes by the time code can get there, it's a few days later and then the situation has changed.
Right.
Off the top of my head, I think there would just be some logistical issues.
Uh, yeah, Eric, they can't hear you. It's okay. Your mic is.
Uh, off the top of my head, there might be, uh, logistical issues. I know Ivan, he's in the side in town, right?
No.
Okay. So if he's on call, it just might take him a while to respond to wherever he needs, wherever he needs to go.
Yeah, we have an officer on call.
Well, what I'm referring to is, what I'm referring to is moving forward. So we put that in place. Rich, you, you probably know what they do in Southampton. Are you aware of that?
I'm actually not aware that they did that. I do not know. I know that they work in their own, uh, the public safety division under the fire marshals. I wasn't aware that they had a twenty-four hour person.
Yeah, I also think code is under, I'm wondering also, it might be helpful to have code under, um, in, in with the police department as opposed to in with the town attorneys.
Yeah, um, I, that was discussed at one point. I don't feel that that's probably the direction we should go in, to be honest with you. I think that we were fine under the town attorney's office. And in addition, my job title for, as town investigator, says, civil service title says that I work under the direction of the town attorney.
I do think it might be better if we, we were able to set up the department so that people were accessible twenty-four hours. So just like I said, when police are.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
When police are investigating a scene, whether they could call code enforcement, could come right over there and take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, that would have to be, I guess, a town board decision on what they wanted to do. I mean, I know that there are maybe some contractual things with the CSCA regarding hours. So.
Well, um.
It's not a terrible idea.
But how, like, right now, how does PD currently get in touch with you?
Well, yeah, we, well, we've established that, um, referral form that, yeah, they can fill out online directly when they come to a house and it's a PDF. That they have on their computers and it gets sent directly over to us. And we respond immediately on those when we get them from them.
Catherine.
And what we routinely do with that is we'll, if they, if they were in a house and they made the observations, we, we'll bring them in and have them do an affidavit. To what they saw and we'll write those violations based off of their affidavit.
Do you think it would be better if they had a direct line to you?
Um, PD always has a direct line to me. They can, I mean, I have a great rapport with the police department.
No, I'm not suggesting you don't have a direct line with them. I'm just thinking, how can we give you the tools? What tools do you guys need?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Uh, Catherine. Catherine, you know, that's a, you know, you're raising some great questions and some of that stuff is under work. So let's have a meeting together. Well, when the new code enforcement officer was hired, we, he can work flexible hours and that's why we're gonna have a meeting.
Yeah.
And it was put into the resolution to ensure that.
But in fairness to Officer Downs, he'll answer his phone twenty-four hours a day if there's an urgent matter.
I usually do.
Yes.
I mean, all the police officers have my direct line and my personal line.
And we do have an officer working on the weekend, on Saturday. Hold on, Catherine, let me, this will just work. And, and we are reorganizing the, um, code enforcement and you guys have been helpful. And on the thing of passing information, um, I don't know if you're aware of Ken. And Richie, I, I thank you for following up on it. You, um, you started doing what they call in law enforcement, intelligence report. When they see a, a, um, a situation, they fill out a form and they submit it to the office. And that's something new as we reorganize code enforcement.
Yeah.
And, um, I just want, I haven't checked with you. Um, and again, thank you for making sure that, you know, it's an effective way. It's used in New York City Police Department with thirty-three thousand offices. Very, very effective. Um, but is it working?
Yes, it is. You know, in the past, we would, you know, just have to do it the old fashioned way. You know, we get a phone call, we get a kidnapping number, I call them. You know, on our desk, this is the property we're at and this is the problems. Now they have a regular form on their computers and, uh, an affillable PDF, like I said.
Oh, you got it onto the computers?
They have it onto their computers right now.
Perfect. And moved to the next level?
So when they go, they can bring that form up right on their laptop.
I just.
Type in Eric, all the information and then send it right off to us.
And that's very, very effective. And, and that's part of reorganizing. And, and Catherine, can you be part of our meeting with myself and code if, uh, you had a lot of questions and?
I'm always accessible and happy to help, but I, it's my under, but we're here right now and we have, um, Eric here and we have Rich here. And I think it's fine to bring up these points right now. I mean, some of these things, it's better we, we move on them. And certainly, I think, Rich, you know I'm not suggesting that you're not accessible. I'm thinking like, I'm thinking, how can, you know, what can we do to move things along in Riverhead? Because we know this is a major concern in our town. Um, so one other thing I wanted to ask about Supreme Court cases. How many Supreme Court, how many cases have we taken to Supreme Court this year?
So far this year, three.
Three this year.
And the year before?
And the year before is five.
And the year before, zero.
Wait, no, I'm sorry. This year is two. And last year was four.
This year was two.
Four. And in twenty, so that, that was twenty eighteen was zero. And I think the year before that was just one or two?
Twenty eighteen, no, twenty eighteen had one or two. Twenty nineteen.
Can you just get us the?
Twenty nineteen, I believe is zero.
Twenty nineteen, two years ago was zero?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, okay.
So certainly, I think, um, you know, the reason I'm asking that is I think it's, you know, we should be taking more cases to Supreme Court. I think that that helps our case overall. And I, you know, we need to be hitting some of these landlords much harder. I know that we've upped the fines, which is good. But, um, you know, some of the situations, just the other night when we heard some of the stories, some of the situations and the way you guys, pictures I've seen. It's really atrocious what some of these landlords do and then charge, charge an enormous amount of rent for it. So.
Yeah, and Catherine, just so you know.
And I think it would be important in those situations if the tenants would come forward or in some way, you know, report when you're living in conditions like that. Because we, we get your typical overcrowded complaints and, and frankly, we've gotten twenty-five this year and twelve of them have been unfounded after investigation. So, if you, it's important, if you're living in bad conditions and you think it should be better, there should be a way for them to maybe contact a third party who will contact us on their behalf. And get it on our radar because that might not be getting swept up in the complaints that come in through, through the, either the online system or via telephone.
And I think that, I think you make a good point on that, Eric. And, you know, it, it was really kind of something to listen to all the stories and listen to all the speakers the other night. And there were a lot of people with different levels of expertise. So I think it would be great to have a discussion and bring some of those stakeholders to the table. Maybe they could help us figure out how to do things in a better way.
And just, Catherine, I just want to add that we have identified three Supreme Court decisions that are possibly gonna be making it through. So again, we're, that's part of the reorganization and, um, we're gonna, we'll have a meeting. You know, get Tim on board and you guys and, and thank you because we're, we're now moving in a very positive, steady direction. And I want to thank you for all your work, guys.
Yeah.
I am gonna, I am gonna say, I can't believe how many topics you listed out.
Yeah, it's, it's quite, quite a bit.
How's it going with the?
But we do, like, I, I want to say, I want to emphasize that we do prioritize the more like safety complaints, like overcrowded housing or no rental permits. Or people living in addicts, or people living in accessory structures. You know, we do prioritize those first before we go to, you know, the general complaints like the litter or the garbage or unregistered vehicles.
We should.
So we continue to do that with all our officers. So when we get something like that, and if we get something from the police department, I'm right on that. Because that's serious when we get something from.
Well, we're also liable if we don't act on it, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Once a complaint comes in and something may happen and.
Yeah.
And again, it's all about the safety, the health and the welfare of, of people living under these conditions. Anything else?
One, in addition to, in addition to the code violations that are written by code enforcement over in justice court, I also, you know, prosecute parking tickets written by TCOs. Violations for not having a parking permit at the beach. I typically get anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five in those cases per week. And also violation, town code violations issued by police officers, including open container violations, uh, public urination violations and.
Commercial violations?
Uh, you commercial, sometimes, uh, some commercial fishing violations. So, we do, uh, I mean, if it's in the town code, we can typically prosecute it.
So, Ca, uh, Ca, can, can you, uh, set up a meeting with us and ensure that Councilwoman Kent is part of it? Okay, as far as code?
Yeah, I do also want to say that the new code adoption of two seventeen housing where we've started issuing violations for that code section.
Well, that was it. We were so behind on code. And some of the recent codes, and I seen that have been changed in twenty years.
Well, you guys will really benefit by the extra person on, on the team, right?
Yeah, we just gotta get them trained. It's probably gonna take a couple of months.
I know that. And I took you away from training today, but I thought it was important that we have them.
He's with Ivan right now.
Yeah, update the public and know that we are on top of it. We're gonna become vigilant. And we, we have new processes in place. And this is all for the betterment of our community. And again, it has to deal with the health and the security and the welfare of individuals, sometimes children, many times and oftentimes our children. And, um, not necessarily evicting people. And if it gets to the point that they're very, very serious, then we have, we have to go to the Supreme Court. And, uh, so, um, Richie, I'll, I'll speak to you about those possible three cases that might be going up further. I know I have them and.
Oh, there you go.
Yep, and, and thank you for providing that. And, uh, we'll have, um, we'll have, um, we'll have regular updates on, on code enforcement for the public.
Yep. I also wanted to let the board know that we effectively removed all the occupants of that house on Wilson.
That was horrible.
That had the lead poisoning children in it.
Rich, can you just, in case someone doesn't know what location you're talking about and the violations, can you just expand on it a little bit?
Yeah, it was, it was on Wilson Street, which is right around the corner from, from here. And, uh, we were contacted by CPS caseworker who.
Child Protective Services?
Child Protective Services who had, um, a child that was, yeah, that, there were three kids in the house, um, but one of them, uh, had lead poisoning. So when we got that complaint, we immediately responded. Um, we were able to get inside and we just saw absolutely horrific conditions on the inside of the house. There was just lead paint peeling off the walls. I mean, you can clearly see where this probably occurred within the house. We posted the house unsafe pursuant to the guidelines and the new chapter two seventeen. And we were able to remove all the occupants of the house. We've been there with, uh, B and G Buildings and Grounds, who's done their assessment and Scott, us the figures on the costs for the board up. And we're looking to proceed with that very soon, um, and get a resolution before the town board.
I was just waiting on the, I was just waiting on the figures.
But most importantly too, though, is you do provide them with assistance in terms of locating safer housing. Yes, yes, emergency housing families were passed out to all the individuals in the house. They've, uh, been in touch with Sister Margaret. And they've, uh, been able to be relocated. So.
Yeah, and that's important. We don't want anybody out. And the homelessness, and again, safety, health and welfare, especially when your kids. And you know what lead poison does to a young child?
Yeah.
It, it alters their mental development. Uh, it, it poisoning and, 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 you know. I, I, I know from my experience, um, in law enforcement, a lot of times when you have lead poisoning because the kids were hungry and ate the paint. You know, that's not uncommon. That they, or they're not cared for and it's a toddler and they just put everything in their mouth. Uh, so there's also the, the safety of the kid. You know, not just because he's just had lead pa, poison, but research what, uh, what leads to, uh, lead poisoning in kids. It's not pretty. And that, that's the purpose, is to protect our entire community regardless of who they are. So I would just want to thank you again and, uh, I look forward to continue working. I was ecstatic to see that a new legislation was put into effect and is working. And that's what we needed to do in code enforcement. And that's what you guys are doing. And I want to thank, thank the councilman and Tim. Um, you know, he was a former code enforcement officer. Tim worked here. He knows the community. And you live in the community, Eric, so we're working together to, to sound this.
To Ryan.
And so do you. Not in overcrowded houses, do you? So I just want to thank you so much, uh, for everything. And this is gonna conclude our discussion item.
No, actually, I wanted to say a couple of things. Um, just because you were talking about it, I was thinking it must be heart wrenching sometimes too to see the situations, especially your both parents.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I reflect on when I was teaching, kids that I knew, the whole family or, you know, multiple people were living in one room. And then when we were having those. And then when we were having those code enforcement meetings, and you would show us the pictures, it was, it was really disturbing.
I have to say, this one, this one on Wilson was, out of my twenty years, was probably one of the top worst that I've seen.
Yeah, the first thing, Richard, I did was contact the CPS-
Child Protective Services?
Child Protective Service supervisor, and made sure that, you know, in addition to the three-year-old that they pulled out of there, they pulled any other kids out of there.
How old were the kids?
Three, five, and seven, I believe.
Oh, jeez.
And just when you were relaying this-
The newborn?
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know that.
And just when you were relaying the story, I got a sense, I got a sense about that. But the overcrowded housing, I think it's not just unsafe to the tenants, it's actually, you know, it's unsafe for the neighbors, and of course, it impacts our school as well. So that's why, you know, it's such an important topic to address. And lots of parts of the code have been updated over the last few years because there were a lot of out-of-date codes in our, things in our code. But I, I'm also glad to hear that you're moving along with some, using the blighted property-
Yeah, I just started property yesterday.
That we worked on together.
And used the blighted code, yeah, up on Waiting River, yeah.
And the bamboo, how often does a bamboo-
Well, no, we, we got, we got, actually, now we got another, we got a-
That came from Waiting River, that actually started on the-
We got another complaint about bamboo just recently, so now we got, now we're up to two complaints this year. We do get them.
It was certainly something I wasn't aware of before I came in office.
I just learned a lot about bamboo over the past two years.
I see plenty of it.
Well, thank you, thank you guys for your work.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys, and enjoy your weekend. This concludes our discussion items for today. In a moment, I'm going to issue a for motion to enter into executive session to discuss the following. On the legal side, matters surrounding litigation entitled Town of Riverhead versus McKinson et al. Personnel, matters surrounding the change in status of counsel to the planning board, and contractual, matters surrounding a consulting agreement. And second is matters surrounding a proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two hunting program license agreement. And can I please have a first and a second?
I have one question. If we, you're talking about having a code enforcement, another code enforcement, enforcement discussion, which I think is great. And I'm asking if you will include some of the stakeholders that offered to help the other night?
That's, it's a committee, and you'll be part of it, and they can be included. And no one is, you know, as far as the direction, I guess, of where we're going, and how we're, we're in the middle of reorganizing. I think the other night became an issue more of, of what is family, and I think it was a little bit, did you want to talk about it? We're talking about the health and safety and law enforcement here.
But there were just, I thought there were a lot of people there that were willing to work with us on code changes, because they were lawyers here.
Let's have a meeting.
So I'm just asking if we could include some of the stakeholders.
Yes, people's opinion, but as far as revising the department, targeting, revising code. And you're more than welcome, you know, to be part of the meeting and you, and share anything that you can, you know, with any stakeholder. But let's not go there because-
I think we always look for everybody's insight.
We do, absolutely. So, and your insight, all right? I appreciate it, and anything else, Catherine?
That would be it.
So can I have a first and a second to go into executive session?
So, first?
Second.
All right, all in favor, all the polls? Everyone be safe, and please watch the internet on our town website. Any updates, we'll be putting up advisories as we see the need fit. We'll be, our emergency team will be operational all week, getting one. And thank you.